Good evening. This is the Village Council Regular Public Meeting. The date is June 11th, 2025. Time is 7:30 PM. I asked if everybody's ready. I just want to make sure. Okay. You good? Okay. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by a posting on the bulletin board in Village Hall, by mail to the Ridgewood News, the Record, and by submission to all persons entitled the same as provided by law of the schedule, including the date and time of this meeting roll call.
Councilmember Mortimer.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Perrin.
Here.
Councilmember We... Whites? I'm sorry.
I've been here like three years.
I know, that's all. I know, it takes a while.
Here.
Councilmember Winograd.
Here.
And Mayor Vagianos.
Here. Will you all please join us in a salute to our flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Mortimer loves the pledge of allegiance and wants to always be out in front on that one. I move the bills, claims, and vouchers and statement of funds on hand as of May 31st, 2025, be accepted as submitted.
Second. Mortimer.
Yes.
Perrin.
Yes.
Whites.
Yes.
Winograd.
Yes.
Vagianos.
Yes. I move that the Village Council minutes of May 7th and May 14th, 2025, having been reviewed by the Village Council and now available in the Village Clerk's office, be approved as submitted.
I second.
Mortimer.
Yes.
Perrin.
Yes.
Whites.
Yes.
Winograd.
Yes.
And Vagianos.
Yes. Well, we have a lot of nice stuff going on tonight. And for that, we're going to go into the well and begin our agenda. I'd like to call up Kurt Holman. How you doing, pal? Good. Kurt is an old friend who has coached my daughter very successfully and came to Ridgewood as a baseball coach. How many years ago, Kurt?
Fifteen.
I can't even believe it's been that long. And he's done okay since then, and he was doing okay before that. And recently, he became the winniest baseball coach in Bergen County history. Let's all give him a big round of applause. How many was it, Kurt?
Six hundred and thirty-one.
Not so bad. By the way, I'm just curious, did you tell your family this was happening tonight?
Uh, no.
And those of us who know Kurt understand that completely. And so with that, I'm going to read a proclamation that we prepared in his honor. Whereas Ridgewood High School head coach Kurt Holman has achieved the historic milestone of becoming the all-time winningest baseball coach in Bergen County history, securing his 631st career victory on May 12th, 2025. And whereas the achievement came after the Maroons' hard-fought fought one-to-nothing victory over Paramus at Veterans Memorial Field in Ridgewood, with several special guests from Holman's baseball journey in attendance to witness the historic moment. And whereas Coach Holman has demonstrated extraordinary dedication to the sport of base... to the sport of baseball, inspiring generations of student athletes with his leadership, mentorship, and commitment to excellence. And whereas the Ridgewood High School baseball program program has flourished under Coach Holman's leadership for the past fifteen years, earning multiple championships, including two Group Four state titles and a Bergen County championship, solidifying Ridgewood's standing as a premier baseball program. And whereas Coach Holman's achievements reflect his deep-rooted commitment to the Ridgewood community, where he has lived since 1990 and raised his family. And whereas Coach Holman's exceptional contribution to Ridgewood High School and the Ridgewood community, as well as his leadership and passion, have not only elevated the Ridgewood baseball program, but have also shaped the lives of countless student athletes. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Village Council of the Village of Ridgewood, on behalf of all of its residents, does hereby express its profound gratitude to and appreciation for Coach Kurt Holman, the all-time winningest baseball coach in Bergen County history, and joins the entire Ridgewood community by proudly recognizing and celebrating the impact that Coach Kurt Holman has had on student athletes, families, and supporters, and congratulates him for his achievement in Bergen County sports history. Let's hear it for Kurt. I know you've prepared a lengthy speech, please try and keep it under ten minutes.
I actually didn't prepare anything. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Council. I appreciate it very much. And it's been a great fifteen years coaching here. And hopefully keep it going a little bit longer. And the community of Ridgewood's been great. And we're just thankful for all the support we've had, both in the high school and the community. We appreciate it very much. Thank you.
You know, we've all seen the caricature of the winning coach who is hard on his kids, who yells at them, who screams or whatever. I know for a fact that this man has never raised his voice in any one of the 631 wins or any of the losses. He just connects well with the kids. He knows the game well, and we are so fortunate to have him with us. Thanks so much, Kurt.
Thanks.
And now I would like to call up Coach Kyle Shulkey and Coach Michael Troy. Good to have you here, fellas. We have... we have so many great coaches here in Ridgewood, in addition to the great teachers and staff. We're just really fortunate. And we had to take a moment to give certificates of recognition to Kyle and Mike for achieving the... the status of Coach of the Year in Bergen County in their respective sports of swimming and basketball. Thank you both so much.
I would just like to thank my grammar school friend Lori de Blasio for being here to support. She's completely randomly here, so. No, but thank you for this honor. It's very nice of you guys to recognize us. We have the greatest job in the world to serve the kids at Ridgewood. I couldn't ask for a better life, so thank you guys.
Thank you so much for this. And, you know, it just... it's very easy to be a coach when you have such incredible swimmers and such talented swimmers, and it makes my job a lot easier. And I come to school every day and come to the pool every day, just appreciating just what a great place this is to work and to coach. Thank you.
We gotta get the pictures. Come on in. Absolutely. Come on up. And now Siobhan is going to read a proclamation, and I think we see a bunch of them here, for National Intern Day. Come on over, Siobhan.
Come on up, everybody. Everybody in Ridgewood Water, everybody up. Okay. So before I read this proclamation, I'm going to tell a short little story. So when Evan and I won, the next day, we had an agenda and we wrote our notes out of what we wanted to accomplish in our term. And very quickly, both my kids and my husband said, "You're going to need some help. You're going to need a lot of help." And upon taking our seats, we, this council, launched an intern program that I know I personally am so very proud of, and I know the council is as well. Clearly, we're a multi-generational town, and these kids, some go to Ridgewood, some are at colleges, some go to private institutions, are amazing. They're hardworking, they're thoughtful, they're innovative. They really love their town and their community, and they come armed with skills that we don't always have. They come prepared to Facebook, Instagram, make reels, promote commerce, and they offer a different lens to us that's incredibly important because they're educated here, they live here, and we, me most especially, hope you return here so I can continue to see you. For me personally, they have made me miss my... my kids less. They've offered such unique insight to us, and it's been such a thrill to watch them grow up and become voters. So I am thrilled and filled with gratitude, and I hope the whole community looks at this and says, "The next generation is amazing, and we are in such good hands." So I'm going to read this proclamation, but for me, it's just been awesome. And I know we're going to do many great things, and I tell you all the time how grateful I am, but I hope you know that that's from the full council as well. So whereas the Village of Ridgewood recognizes the positive impact of experiential learning has on preparing students for success in life, and that all the students should have access to experiential learning opportunities. And whereas experiential learning opportunities such as work-based learning are important to the economic vitality of both businesses and communities. And whereas work-based learning services connect student skills and competencies gained from education with those used in the workplace. And whereas on the last night... last Thursday in July, National Interns Day is celebrated across the country by millions of students, higher-end education institutes, employers, and other organizations. And whereas in recognition of National Intern Day, Ridgewood is committed to elevating awareness, advancing meaningful and diverse work-based learning opportunities, and acknowledging those students involved locally in internships, as well as educational institutions and employers who work with them and support with them. Whereas we recognize the following interns: MJ Aguilar, Alex Violi, Travis Young, Grace Kim, and Henry Walsh for their work with Councilmember Winograd; Katrina Missles as an engineering intern for Ridgewood Water; Justin Uncargo; Harold Johnson; Andrew Massaloni; Varian Chobi; and James Ruane for their work with Ridgewood Water as GIS interns, as well as Boden Federko; Angela Monaco for their work commencing September 2025 as GIS interns; Jalen Locke, our most recent intern, for supporting the Ridgewood beautification team; Gregory Alters in supporting access; Nevada Brown in supporting the villagers' managers' office; and Ryan Sullivan for supporting the municipal clerk. And whereas Ridgewood recognizes the importance of internships and student involvement as we strive to be the best place to live, work, and raise a family. Now, therefore, be resolved that the Village Council of the Village of Ridgewood does hereby proclaim July 31st, 2025 as National Intern Day in the Village of Ridgewood, and urges all the residents to join in creating meaningful and diverse work-based learning opportunities, recognizing that interns of today are truly our future leaders of tomorrow.
Hi, I'm Andrew. I'm very grateful for this award, whatever it would be, but yeah. I've had a lot of fun. I've had a lot of fun interning at Ridgewood Water, and it's been a really memorable experience for me. So thank you guys again.
Hi, I'm Alex. It's been a pleasure working with Siobhan and the town. I really liked, learned a lot, and really enjoyed like just all the different projects around that we've done, especially just like the beautification projects around Ridgewood. It's always nice to, you know, mulch an area or like plant because afterward you want to see like the projects that you've made. So overall, it's just been a really good journey, so thank you.
Hello, I am James Ruane, and I enjoyed my experience of being an intern at the Ridgewood Water Company. I've done... I've done... I had a good experience out of it. And what I looked for... and I... and I look forward to helping it. And I... and I did enjoy helping out the company.
Hi, my name is Grace, and first off, I'd like to thank Siobhan. She took a chance on freshman year me and gave me my first real internship, so I really appreciate that. She really gave me the building blocks I needed to continue, and I'd also like to thank the Village of Ridgewood for also taking a chance on me. Over the past two years, Siobhan has really been like a second mother to me, from talking about projects in Ridgewood to giving me advice on what bags to buy. I really appreciate everything that she and Ridgewood has done.
Hi, I'm Jalen. I love to see some familiar faces in here to teachers and coaches and council members. So I want to thank the mayor first of all, and the council, and Siobhan for giving me this opportunity. I'm super excited, and one of my main goals in life is to get back to my town that I love so much and that you guys love so much. So I'm excited to get to work for you guys. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nevada, and I am so grateful for this opportunity. I've loved working with Carol and Siobhan and all of the kind faces that I see, again, the coaches. I've had Mr. Shulkey as a teacher, so it's great to see him again. I love working here because I'm able to give back to the Village of Ridgewood as I graduated from high school, and I've lived here my whole life. So I'm just really excited to be working here for this opportunity.
I'm MJ. I'd like to thank the council for this great opportunity. Not only has it been rewarding, but it's been eye-opening, and I'm extremely grateful for every step I've been able to take along the way. Thank you very much.
I'm Gregory, and I'd like to thank the council for taking a chance on me, and I'm glad that I get to work taxes, help people, and that's it.
So how fortunate are we to have young adults like this who all want to give back to their community? Listen, one day, they may be giving out certificates and proclamations to students when they're sitting on the council because we're really proud of them. So let's give them a big round of applause. Pictures? Excellent. Thank you guys so much. And now Pam's going to read a proclamation in honor of Juneteenth.
Thanks, Paul. Whereas the Emancipation Proclamation was formally issued on January... on January 1863, declaring that enslaved Africans in the Confederate States of America were to be freed. And whereas, over two and one-half years later, Union Army General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas, and read Order Number Three on June 19th, 1865, informing the enslaved residents of the state of their freedom. And whereas, June 19th, Juneteenth, a linguistic blend of the words "June" and "19th" was adopted to commemorate this historical and pivotal date in American history. And whereas, beginning on January 1st, 1980, several states and municipal governments in the United States have declared June 19th, Juneteenth, a legal holiday. And whereas, June 19th, Juneteenth, is celebrated nationally and internationally to recognize the end of the enslavement of Africans in the United States and to celebrate the culture and achievements of African-Americans. And whereas, today, millions of Americans of all races, creeds, religious, and ethnic backgrounds celebrate Juneteenth, which not only celebrates freedom, but also acknowledges the achievements of African-Americans. And as celebrations continue to spread, we can all be reminded of the oft-repeated maxim, "Until all are free, none are free", that highlights the manner of the end of slavery in the United States. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Village Council of the Village of Ridgewood does hereby proclaim that the 19th day of June shall be annually known as Juneteenth, 2025, in the Village of Ridgewood, and urges all residents to join in this joyous celebration of freedom and learn more about its origins, reflecting on how they can promote equity and honoring the resilience, achievements, and legacy of our Black community. I know I will be reflecting on that day, and I hope you all will be too.
Thank you so much, Pam. And now we have one more proclamation. It's recognizing Ridgewood as a Bee City, USA, and observance of National Pollinator Week. Evan, is this yours? Oh, I'm s... oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's right.
Thank you very much. And it's kind of exciting to be reading this because Ridgewood has been a bee city since 2017, and I worked to make that happen. And to be sitting out there and hearing this read for the first time, and now to come full circle and be reading it is pretty exciting. So whereas pollinator species such as thousands of species of bees are essential partners in producing much of our food supply, and whereas pollinator species provide significant environmental benefits that are necessary for maintaining health, diverse urban and suburban ecosystems, and whereas pollination plays a vital role for the trees and plants of our community, enhancing our quality of life and creating recreational and economic development opportunities, and whereas pollinators weave connections, this year's event urges us to appreciate the essential role pollinators play in creating and expressing human culture in all forms. These essential creatures, including bees, butterflies, moss, bats, beetles, hummingbirds, are the unsung heroes behind the food we enjoy and the beauty that surrounds us. And whereas for decades, the Village of Ridgewood has managed urban landscapes and public lands that include many municipal parks and greenways as wild... as well as wildlife habitats. And whereas the Village of Ridgewood provides recommendations to developers and residents regarding landscaping to promote wise conservation stewardship, including the protection of pollinators and maintenance of their habitat in urban and suburban environments. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Village Council of the Village of Ridgewood does hereby proclaim June 16th through the 22nd, 2025, as the Village of Ridgewood's observance of National Pollinator Week 2025. Thank you.
I like the way that came full circle for you, Frank. Okay, let's get down to business. Okay. That's always a lot of fun, and I really enjoy that a lot. We will now go to public comment. Seeing no one, we're going to close public comment, and we'll go to our manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be briefed tonight, since the last manager's report was 48 hours ago. But the Historic Sites Council meeting that was initially scheduled for June 19th, we were alerted late today, and a notice will be going out from the State Historic Preservation Office later this week that we've been rescheduled for the... before the Historic Sites Council on the Shedler application for July 21st. That is a Monday. So I wanted to just bring everybody up to speed on that. And the... as I mentioned, SHPO indicated that notices... proper notice will be... will be made in short order. Just a few announcements tonight. Graydon Pool is now open from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM daily. This will be through Labor Day, September 1st. As a reminder, two-day-a-week irrigation schedule is in effect. Odd-numbered addresses for irrigation are Tuesday and Saturday, and even-numbered addresses are Wednesday and Sunday. No irrigation is allowed on Monday, Thursday, or Friday. The Ridgewood Guild is sponsoring Music in the Night on Friday evenings downtown through Labor Day. Music in the Park will be taking place on Saturday evenings from 7:30 to 9:30 at Van Ness Square. June 14th is Amped, and June 21st is Thursday Eve Collective. Ridgewood Guild is sponsoring Free Movies in the Park on Wednesday nights, beginning at 9:00 PM at Van Ness Square. That begins tonight and runs through August 20th. The Cash Off Shell has started their summer concert series out back on Veterans Field. Please bring a chair or blanket. Concerts begin at 8:00 PM and end at 10:00 PM, unless otherwise noticed, and are scheduled for every Tuesday and Thursday evening in the months of June, July, and August. Village of Ridgewood and all Village offices will be closed on Thursday, June 19th, and observance of Juneteenth, and the recycling center will also be closed. There'll be no curbside bulk refuse that week. The Ridgewood Chamber of Commerce is presenting the 25th Annual Ridgewood Farmers Market on Sundays, beginning June 22nd through October 29th, from 8:30 AM to 2:00 PM at the train station parking lot on the west side. And finally, upcoming Village Council meetings. June 25th is a work session, July 2nd is a work session, and July 9th is a public meeting. All begin at 7:30 PM. And that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Keith. And now we'll go to council reports. I have a feeling they might be very brief, since we just did this two days ago. But let's see. Frank, anything?
No. Two of my committees are meeting tomorrow, both CSAC, Citizen Safety, as well as Open Space.
Great. Siobhan?
Sure. So I had a meeting with Shadtree last night here. I want to thank the commission for all the hard work. I want to remind the community that the first Monday after school is out, which is June 23rd, will be Mulch Monday. I want to remind the council, you're all able-bodied mulchers. So this is an effort to make sure that our trees are well-maintained, and it adds to the beautification. So please join us on June 23rd, rain or shine, and we meet at Van Ness. We also want to remind the community, particularly in town, that if you see a tree failing to thrive, report it because the trees in town are under warranty still, so we want to make sure if any of them need to be replaced, they are. And Shadtree is going to be kicking off probably in the fall, a thousand-tree initiative, and the general concept is it's going-
planning board, so if you're interested in that, it is open to the public. That starts at 7:30 tomorrow. That's all I have.
Thanks, Pam, and I don't have anything since two days ago, so Heather, take it away.
Okay. There are no introductions to public hearings for Ridgewood Water for ordinances, so we'll move on to resolutions. The following resolutions, number 25-256 through 25-264, will be adopted by a consent agenda with one vote by the village council. They will be read by title only. Award contract geographic information system software support for the Village of Ridgewood and Ridgewood Water. Award contract granulated activated carbon treatment system, mountain PFOS treatment facility. Award contract granulated activated carbon treatment system, east side reservoir PFOS treatment facility. Award contract granulated activated carbon treatment system, main PFOS treatment facility. Title 59 approval, bank stabilization at Hoakus Brook along the Dunham Trail. Award contract bank stabilization at Hoakus Brook along the Dunham Trail. Award contract road resurfacing and repair in Ridgewood and Glen Rock. Award contract road resurfacing and repair in Wykow. Award professional services contract, project management and video production, public relations campaign for Ridgewood Water improvements. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
And Vagianas?
Yes.
I move the first reading of Ordinance 4049.
I second the motion.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
And Vagianas?
Yes.
I move the clerk read Ordinance 4047 by title on second reading, and that the public hearing thereon be open.
It's actually 4048. That was on the updated agenda.
Oh. Forgive me. 4048.
Second.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
And Vagianas?
Yes.
I move the clerk read Ordinance 4047 by title on second reading, and that the public hearing thereon be open.
It's actually 4048. That was on the updated agenda.
Oh. Forgive me. 4048.
Second.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
And Vagianas?
Yes.
I move the clerk read Ordinance 4047 by title on second reading, and that the public hearing thereon be open.
It's actually 4048. That was on the updated agenda.
Oh. Forgive me. 4048.
Second.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
And Vagianas?
Yes. I move that Ordinance 4048 be adopted on the second reading and final publication as required by law.
I second the motion.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
And Vagianas?
Yes.
The following resolutions, number 25-265 through 25-294, will be adopted by a consent agenda with one vote by the village council. They will be read by title only. Wave 4th of July vendor fees. Grant permission to fireworks by Grucci for fireworks display. Authorized membership in the inter-local purchasing system national purchasing cooperative. Title 59 approval crossing guard services. Award contract crossing guard services. Award contract decontamination washer for firefighter gear. This money actually, this is actually being paid for through a grant. Award contract under state contract firefighter turnout gear. Award contract under state contract manhole frames and covers. Award contract under state contract Liberty Digital recording software and sound upgrades in Sydney V Stult Junior Courtroom. Award contract under Passaic Valley Sewerage Commission Cooperative Purchasing Program, three Niche, flood pumps. Award contract under the inter-local purchasing system floodgates for various locations on Level One of Village Hall. Award contract concession stand at train station. Award contract under state contract Ford F-350 pickup truck for recycling. Award contract under Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program, Ford F-350 liftgate for recycling. Authorized shared services agreement, snow plowing agreement with Bergen County. Authorized change order. Professional services contract, New Jersey licensed site remediation professional services, underground tanks at North Walnut Street parking lot. Authorized change order, irrigation system services, upgrade of irrigation system at Community Gardens. Authorized execution and submission of New Jersey Department of Transportation 2026 Municipal Aid Grant, West Ridgewood Avenue Resurfacing. Authorized NJDOT grant application, local transportation projects, funds, grants program, bus shelter at Van Ness Square. Accept donations, New York, New Jersey Trail Conference, trail plan, and workshops, various parks. Declare property surplus, engineering vehicle, annual renewal of liquor licenses. Authorized place-to-place transfer of liquor license, expansion of premises, steel-wheel tavern. Authorized settlement agreement Barack versus Biaggi and Village of Ridgewood. Appoint representatives to Open Space Trust Regional Committee. Appoint representatives to Community Development Regional Committee. Appoint members to Ridgewood Arts Council. Appoint members to Ridgewood Community Center Advisory Board. GF Flood Risk Control Program. And award contract lease of taxi stand. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
And Vagianas?
Yes.
And so let's return to public comment. Public comment is now open. And we have someone on hybrid access, so Cynthia, you're up.
Good evening. Cynthia, O.P., Ridgewood resident. I wanted to just take a moment to acknowledge that you had--
Cynthia, 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 I'm going to interrupt you.
Yes?
We can't hear you right now. I don't know if you're close to your phone.
You can hear me.
So why don't you start over?
Can you hear me now?
Much better. Thank you.
Okay. So I wanted to take a moment to just acknowledge that you had the interns there this evening, and I think it's great to have young talent to learn about the village and to take part in their municipal government. But one thing that I wanted to mention is that it's a little short-sighted that we talk about them being leaders of tomorrow when we're voting on artificial park, which we know is bad for the environment. What kind of message are we really sending our young people that we care so much about when you're talking about a product that cannot be recycled? We know it's bad for the environment. And so that confuses me, because we're handing this over to them. This will be their environment tomorrow for many generations to come, so I don't think it's responsible. It's certainly not green. You talk about being a B-City, and we have talked about microplastics and bees. It's dangerous to ecosystems, so a lot of what you said is very contradictory to the way you're acting. And when I was an intern as a young person, someone taught me that actions speak louder than words, and I remember that to this day and try to act responsibly. So I'd like to know how that's being handled when you're marching in a very different direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. Anybody else? Seeing no one, we're going to close public comment. Oh, excuse me. Go right ahead.
Anne Loving, Ridgewood resident. I just wanted to wish to all the fathers on the dais, and the two fathers in the room, a Happy Father's Day.
Thank you very much, Anne. Anybody else? Seeing no one, we're going to close public comment. Would anyone like to respond to any of the commentators?
Thank you, Anne.
Yes, thank you, Anne. Very thoughtful. Anybody else? No? Then let's entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed.
Thanks.
I don't think I remember it. I'm forgetting.
Yep, it is.